All right, so I'm calling to order the special meeting of the Desert Water Agency Board of Directors on June 28, 2023. This is going to be a public hearing regarding Proposition 218. I'd like to ask folks in the who are either participating virtually or are present in the boardroom to please silence your mobile devices. And if you are participating virtually, we'll ask you to remain muted until it's time for your public comments, if you'd like to make them. So having said that, just a couple of housekeeping, one more housekeeping piece of information. If you'd like to make public comment today and speak about the the topic of the proposed rate increases, there is a slip of paper that looks like this that's directly behind us underneath that map of our one of our settling ponds. Yep, right there, the woman in the orange shirt has picking up what right now. So if you'd like to get one of those, feel free to do that and fill it out. If you intend to give an oral, so if we'll get we'll get more into that later about how to use this. But then at some point, once you've filled it out, you can present it to our Assistant Secretary Ms. Baca, if you would raise your hand, please, so that people are aware of who you are. Great. All right, so let's begin. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Secretary Assistant Secretary Mako, may we have a roll call vote?
Director Grasha.
President.
Director Blumer.
President.
Secretary Treasurer McKenna.
President.
Vice President Bowman.
President.
And President Ortega.
President, thank you. So I'd like to welcome everybody to this meeting this morning. Thank you for taking the time to be here today. Well, you'll all have the opportunity to address the board if you wish. But we're going to start off with a couple of presentations. The first item on the agenda, item 3A, is a brief presentation by Desert Water Agency Consultant Ashley Metzger. Ms. Metzger?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, the rest of the team here at Desert Water Agency, and to the members of the public that have come here today. My name is Ashley Metzger. I'm with Regional Government Services Authority, and I have worked with DWA in some capacity or another for the past 10 to 12 years. I am happy to be here to talk to you about the really thorough process that has preceded today's hearing. And wanted to start off by sharing the background information about Desert Water Agency's costs. So as you well know, we have a very large pipeline system, about 425 miles of pipe. And we've got reservoirs and booster stations and lots of infrastructure throughout the district that we have to maintain, both as a part of delivering tap water service and as a part of importing water, like the basins that you alluded to earlier, the photos in the boardroom here. Additionally, we have to add infrastructure and equipment to the system from time to time for a variety of reasons. A good example of that is the new Snow Creek Village filtration plant that went in in 2020. And we have to run the plant, do all the treatment involved with that. We have to collect samples, submit them to the state, report out. So it's a very involved process in order to deliver water that meets California's standards, which are some of the strictest in the world. We also, the the agency works on long term planning and sustainability so that folks down the road, you know, grandchildren and their grandchildren of the current residents can enjoy water like like we do today here in the desert because water is really the backbone of our community and the economy here. So we have to plan ahead to make sure that we can meet those demands of the future. And then, of course, we have staffing costs. We have so many expert people on this team. And there's so much involved with retaining folks who are certified, qualified, and have the level of knowledge and expertise to run the system. So how does DWA pay for all of these things? Well, there's the monthly bills for water, wastewater and recycled water. Property taxes are collected, and a small amount of the property taxes can be used for almost anything. But the bulk of the property tax taxes levied by Desert Water Agency can really only be used for one specific set of costs, which is associated with the state water project. We also have grants, and we'll talk a little bit more in detail about that later, and then investment returns. So what has changed that is leading the DWA team to come before the board today with proposed set of increased rates over the next five years? It's a variety of factors. Inflation is something that has been really ever present in our society for the past couple of years and impactful to every level of the community, from people going to the grocery store all the way up to, you know, Fortune 500 companies. And as a government agency, it affects desert water in terms of procuring not only contractors to do projects, but also supplies needed to do these vital infrastructure upgrades and replacements. And pipeline replacement is a big part of the driver for the proposed increase as well. The pipeline system and Desert Water Agency is aging. There are pipelines that are in place that go back to almost Great Depression era. You know, Palm Springs was built out pretty early in the Coachella Valley, and a lot of those pipelines have remained in place. And while it's great that we've gotten a really full lifespan out of them, infrastructure that's past its lifespan is is a priority for us to replace because we're seeing leaks spring up quite quite a lot in certain areas. And a more proactive program over the course of the years to get up to about $8 million a year in pipeline replacement will help us get ahead of the leaks so that we're not facing catastrophic failure on a wide scale. So trying to be proactive to the extent that we can, we've likened it in the past to painting the Golden Gate Bridge. You know, probably when we get done replacing what this plan includes, we'll have to start start over with the pipe that's at that point past its life. There've been quite a number of new regulations as well. You know, everything from updated lead and copper rules at the federal level to clean air rules that will require us to make massive investments in our fleet. So those are things that we anticipate that have already had an effect, and we anticipate will continue to have an effect. And then lastly, there are new reserve funding targets. DWA needs to more aggressively fund reserves to reduce risk and be prepared in the event of emergency or catastrophe or, you know, simply replacement of this really large system with lots of infrastructure. So the bottom line is the independent study conducted by NBS using AWWA or American Water Works Association standard methods determined that DWA is not charging enough to cover its cost with the present rates. By law, DWA can only charge the cost of service. You know, we're not like SoCal Gas or SoCal Edison. We are a government entity. There's no profit involved. And what that leads us to is that in order for the agency to remain financially sound and continue to provide the same level of services that it does today, DWA will need to increase rates. So that's what's being recommended today. We wanted to show you kind of the rationale for this. These graphs show you the current revenue requirements and how they escalate over time. And you see the the black line holds steady, the revenue where where we are with existing rates. And the dashed line is what the revenue would be under proposed rates. And each one of the stacked bars from 2024 to 2028 represent what we see cost projections into the future. So in order to meet those rising costs, we do have to consider this rate increase. And certainly, if the board did not elect to approve the rate increase, then, you know, we would have to pretty significantly rethink our programmings, most notably the capital replacement program of the pipelines, which, you know, drives those costs up. And you can see the different colors there represented. The darker blue on bottom is O and M. There's a light or a teal bar between the two that's debt service, a very small amount. And then the teal bar that you see getting kind of increasingly larger as the years go on is that rate funded capital, which is inclusive of the pipelines. So with that kind of sharing the how we've gotten here and why, these are the rates that are being proposed. And Finance Director Esther Sinan is going to go over these in more detail when she presents the resolutions to the board for adoption. But we did want to share them here in the event that it would help inform any of the members who are here to make comment. So you see for our most common set of customers, the 5/8 by 3/4 or 1-inch meters, it's going from 33.53 currently, and in January 1 would go up to 38.32. So, you know, you're seeing a little less than a $5 increase. And then we have here the volumetric rate. So every month, as you know, customers have two components of the bill. The last one that we just showed the chart for is a monthly meter charge. It's the same amount every month, no matter how much water they use. This portion of the bill is a volumetric portion. So most customers will have a much lower bill in January because they're using much less and a much higher bill in in July, if you will. And each unit is billed at the same rate. And currently, that rate is $2.28. And the proposed increase would have a rate of $2.44 going into effect January 1, 2024, and then all the way up to $3.10 by January 1 of 2028. And this slide just shows you kind of the marriage of those those two elements, the fixed charge and the volumetric charge for a customer who's using 31 units of water. So 31 units of water, you know, is probably what you'll see on a customer that has some grass, a sizable yard, perhaps a pool. You know, that's a good amount of water. And that customer currently pays about $104 a month and would be looking to go up to about $113 or $114 a month, beginning in January. There's also a wastewater charge that will be changing or that is proposed to change along with these rates. And this is only applicable in Cathedral City. The city of Palm Springs manages the wastewater charges for customers in Palm Springs. So this is the Dream Homes neighborhood and the Cathedral City Cove and the business corridor along there. Desert Water Agency does not treat that wastewater, but we do collect and convey it. And so the charge for our services to do that and to do the administrative component of billing is captured here. So it's currently $6.15, proposed to go up to 7.31 in January, and then ultimately 8.81 in January of 2028. Again, this is applicable to Cathedral City customers, not to folks in Palm Springs. We do have some zone pumping charges that are not going to be applicable to most customers. People who are in the the base zones, what you see on the map as F, A, and C are not going to have additional charges. But folks that live in higher elevations do pay a zone pumping charge presently to account for the additional energy needed to deliver the water to their properties. And that charge is slated to increase over time and depends on where people live. So we have a map available. There was an interactive map. People could zoom in and look at their home on the website. So that's been available to people, and we're happy to help anyone who is trying to determine where they fall. But if you don't presently see a zone pumping charge on your bill, then this wouldn't be applicable to you. There's also a rate for Chino Canyon. At present, this only applies to the Palm Springs Ariel tramway. At present, they pay $5.13. And come January, they're looking to pay $6.40 per unit. And in 2028, that will be up to $11.19. We actually met, Steve Mark and I met with the folks, and Esther, I believe, joined us too, met with the folks from the Ariel tramway and discussed the rates with them and the impact it would have on their operations. This rate was developed a little bit separately because it's a it's a separate beast, if you will. The water supply is separate. The costs incurred are separate. So we did a deep dive, and we did some really targeted outreach to make sure that we were able to connect with that customer and let them know what was ahead. And then recycled water monthly charges are included here. They vary by meter size. And this is again, the same, they pay the same charge every month based on the size of their meter. And then the volumetric rate changes based on their level of consumption. So what Desert Water Agency has done, in addition to proposing increased rates, is looking to reduce costs. And this is not something that we've just done during this short period. It's something that we've done over a number of years. In the past several years, Desert Water Agency has gotten 17 state and federal grants totaling $10.2 million. Steve spearheaded a project to renegotiate contracts for more revenue from hydro power plants. We entered into contracts to generate revenue from vacant land. And then there are some vacant positions that have not been filled. So whenever the agency has considered proposing rate increases, it's a question we always ask ourselves, you know, what what has the agency done to reduce costs as well? And we also wanted to share for the folks in attendance and as as good practice, that there are resources available. If affordability is a concern, there are a number of really great programs. One is something that Desert Water Agency created at the time of its last multi-year rate increase back in 2016, called the Help to Others Assistance Program. It's managed by United Way of the Desert. And if customers are income eligible, they can qualify for up to $200 in bill credits a year. And then the United Way also connects them with a whole variety of other tools and assistance. And then there's resources from the county through a newer program called LIWAP. It's a low-income household water assistance program. And they have a lot of funding available that is, you know, they they can do small pockets of assistance when needed, or they can really step in when appropriate with larger amounts that we've seen come through for customers. So I would encourage anyone who's concerned about affordability to go to dwa.org/h2o and look into those resources. One question that we've gotten throughout the course of the process of informing the community about the proposed rates is, you know, are the rates going up because of water conservation? You know, we're just coming out of a large drought. Is that what has driven this process? Well, not entirely. And in a lot of ways, we try to kind of not think too much about the impact of drought because it can be very flashy. The amount of water we're selling in a month has very short term impacts on the agency's revenues. And there are some tools that we're proposing to manage that. But in the long term, water conservation is a really powerful tool that will lower costs for our customers. So we want to make sure that people in the community understand the really nuanced relationship with water conservation. It is a really important tool we have and an investment for the future. But in the short term, it really can wreak a little bit of havoc. And it it is important to remember for for customers, regardless of what the rates are in the current structure, if you use less water, your bill will be lower. And there are things that Desert Water Agency can do using grant funds to help customers. So a little bit about the tools we're talking about to avoid the volatility in the short term. There's a drought rate, which is used in times of shortage. And that amount is added to every unit of water. This is something we already have in place, but we're proposing to change. And you'll see it's not all increases. Some of them are going down just based on the level of shortage. It was reconfigured, the drought rate, to align with the water shortage contingency plan. We did not have a water shortage contingency in plan when we first developed the drought rate back in 2016. So we thought it was important, going through this process, to align it with the plan that we do have so that when the state does require us to take action, there's an appropriate measure here. It's also worth noting that we did go through a drought between the last rate increase cycle and this one. And the drought rate was never implemented. It's something that's at the full discretion of the board and requires a vote of the board. In some circumstances, it will be something that staff might recommend, but it's not something that staff did recommend during the last drought because the revenue didn't dictate that we needed to implement the rate. So it is important to note that when we're talking about all of these recent charges, we're talking about ceilings. And the board has the ability to go up to each amount listed in the Proposition 218 notice. But it may not elect to increase at all in a given year, or it may elect to increase only partially. And staff will be able to provide better real time information about the agency's finances because what we've projected happening two or three years from now may not align with what's actually happening. So it is important to note that there's still a lot of flexibility built in here. There is a new tool that's part of the proposed rates, which is a revenue stabilization rate. So COVID was a really good teacher for everyone in the world, but Desert Water Agency as well. You know, there were not necessarily drought drivers for changes in consumption, but there were big shifts in consumption. And something like that, or like a major earthquake, could put us in the position of being financially vulnerable. And having this rate would allow us to have the board quickly consider putting something like this in, and it will not be added to water bills unless approved by a vote of the board. And it would be automatically removed if revenues recover. So the reduction percentages you see are compared with revenue projections. So if we are 10% below the projection, that is when the board could consider what you see outlined in the table on the screen. And then we wanted to start to wrap up by just sharing all of the the effort. We put out a comprehensive Proposition 218 notice. It wasn't just the standard legal language, black and white, one piece mailer, and it stuffed in an envelope. It was a really nicely produced document that had a lot of background information. It was provided in both English and Spanish. And, you know, had photos and lots of frequently asked questions. We did two workshops, one hybrid that was available on demand here at Desert Water Agency, and then another at the Cathedral City Senior Center. We did not get a lot of attendance despite, you know, talking about these workshops on KESQ, on the radio, putting notices up on social media. We gave updates at the the One PS meeting, which is a very popular forum. So we did push this out quite a bit, including on our own website. And one thing that we did do a little differently this time that we felt was very successful was Steve and I met with a number of large users and talked with them about how these rates would impact them and offered them analyses. So, you know, we could take their current rate of consumption and show them what their rates would look like next year. So again, wanted to to close out here with affordability. Help to Others, a really important tool that we've been talking to customers about. It pencils out to about $16.66 a month, which is in excess of the increase. So, you know, if someone's concerned about the increase and they haven't taken advantage of this program yet, this could actually offset any increase that they might see next year. So the last thing we want to do today is kind of just walk through for everybody the process that we've held to date. We had a third party prepare a rate study using standard best practices. We talked about that. That's the NBS study that was adopted by the board in April. The notices were mailed out to all DWA customers on May 12. We held public workshops May 26 and June 10. We have a public hearing today, and the board will consider adoption with resolutions. The recycled water rates are slated to go into effect July 1 of this year. So in just a couple of days here. And all of the remaining rates are scheduled to go into effect January 1, 2024. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions from the board.
Thank you. We'll start with Director Grasha. Do you have any questions?
I probably had 10 of them as you went through it. But the one that sticks out right now is on the subject of the drought relief amount. Have has this board ever instituted that emergency relief?
The drought rate surcharge has never been implemented, no, despite the fact that we have experienced drought.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Director Blumer?
I don't have any questions. Thank you for the presentation.
Secretary Treasurer McKenna?
I have no question. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice President Bowman?
No question.
Thank you. I have no further questions, so I believe we can proceed to the next presentation. Mr. Riddell, can you please give us a report on the public hearing legal process?
Yes, Mr. President, members of the board, members of the public, both in person and attending online. Today's hearing is a legally required hearing. I actually just mentioned that there were a couple of workshops that were also conducted. Those were not required. They were offered as a matter of convenience for folks who might have had some questions in advance. I understand that there was not great attendance at those, but it's still a good thing that those occurred. Today's hearing is legally required. It's a requirement set forth in the Constitution. It was added to the Constitution by Proposition 218 a number of years ago, which added Article 13D to the Constitution. And the section that applies to this hearing is Section 6 of Article 13D of the California Constitution. So what what it says is that the board is required to conduct a public hearing to provide people an opportunity to to file a protest. They can appear at the hearing. They can make comments. I know that the board is interested in hearing any comments. But what's most important from a legal perspective is that any protests need to be submitted in writing. And so if you would like to protest and you have not yet done so, then it would be important to put down something in writing and hand it to the board secretary prior to the conclusion of the hearing so that it will be counted. And all it needs to indicate is who you are so that we can verify that you're either the property owner or else the person responsible for paying the bill has to identify the property. And you need to indicate which rate you're protesting, any one or multiple or all of them. So that is important because what the law provides is that at the conclusion of the public hearing, those protests need to be tallied. If there were a majority protest, that is a protest filed by property owners or rate payers that represented more than half of the of the of the affected parcels, that would prevent the board from taking action on the proposed rate increases. If the protest level falls short of 50% of the parcels, then the board is free to 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 take action and is not prohibited by the Constitution from doing so. So that's basically it. The main message from me. The main message from me is if you want to file a protest and you have not done so already, it would be important to do that before the conclusion of the hearing and identify who you are, the rate that you're protesting, and identify the property, the parcel that's involved. That can be by street address or assessor parcel number or whatever. So that's it from me, I think, unless there are any questions. I will point out that there is, assuming that the board does choose to proceed with the rate adjustments as proposed, they are included within a kind of a long resolution. And the reason why the resolution is so long is because it states all of the rates that the agency has, all of them. And there are only a couple of those that are proposed for revision. And so it's not like all of these are new rates. It's only, you know, certain portions of the rates that are proposed for revision, and the rest are simply restated, and they remain in place.
Thank you. So just to reiterate, if you'd like to make a protest at this point, or even just a public comment, please fill out the card and present it to Assistant Secretary Baca, who is at the monitor over there at the corner on the desk. And we'll now hear public comments on the proposed rates. In the interest of everyone's time, we're asking that all speakers keep their comments to three minutes. And there's a clock behind me that will monitor that. The board will discuss questions and thoughts after all of these comments have come. All those commenting have had a chance to speak. And with that, we will move to the next agenda item, which is 4A through C. We're not there yet, sir. Just please, thank you. So with that, we will open the public hearing, and we'll start with the first person.
That would be Anita Zikome. Como.
Thank you for your presentation, Ashley. And I have my mother here too, and she represents one address and I represent another address. And when I understand how the rates have to go up and everything, but it just seems like, okay, my mother has lived here since 1956 and I was born here. And we used to have really good tasting water, really, really good tasting water. And about 30 years ago, it was just the best. And I used to go down to El Centro to work in the hospital down there, and you couldn't drink the water. Well, we get to, you know, 20 years ago and up until now, you can't drink the water. It's almost as bad as El Centro water. And so it just seems like every time you raise the rates, the water quality goes down. And believe me, I've got experience. I've been here most all my life. And my mother especially too. And the other thing is, is there's so much calcium in the water. When you boil the water or make coffee, you just get these huge crusts of calcium. And then we've had to resort to buying distilled water. And of course, we have water filters in the house. And then the other thing is, is of course, we're into water conservation. And the sprinklers break all the time because they're filled with calcium. So you'll get these gushers all over your yard from the calcium. And did I leave out anything, Mom? This is Mary Como, my mother, and she moved here with my dad, like I said, in 1956. And then, of course, I was born here at Desert Hospital. So I think that's it. And it's mainly the quality. I understand how prices go up, but it's just the quality is so bad now. So anyway.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comment?
I'm just checking via the website real quick. No other protests or written comments.
Okay, I'm not sure if that gentleman is coming back or not, but I guess we can proceed. Yep, okay. So not seeing any other members of the public here for public comment. I will now close the public hearing. Thank you all for your feedback. The public hearing is now closed. And I will ask staff if they would like to make any clarifications to the presentation that we, the two presentations we've already received this morning, or any of the public comments made so far.
I would like to make a brief clarification on the screen. When showing recycled water rates, I showed the incorrect set of rates in that graph. So I just want you to know that what we should lean into and what is going to be voted upon are the recycled water rates that are in the resolution, which are correct. So apologies for what was presented on the screen. I just want to make sure that for the record, we have it, that the graph that was shown on the screen is incorrect.
Thank you.
Could I also make a clarification? It was stated that the sewer rates will take effect beginning in January. But I think it should be noted that Desert Water Agency does pass through the treatment charges that are applied by the city, by, I guess, Coachella Valley Water District in Cathedral City and by the city of Palm Springs. And since their rates are going up sooner than that, that portion of the rate increase will need to go up as of July 1. So the pass through of the rates from the treatment entities will go into place July 1. The agency's own rate increase will not go into effect until January 1 of next year.
And just for clarification, you're referring to the conveyance, essentially?
That's right.
Yes, thank you. All right. I guess at this point, we are ready for tabulation of protests. Assistant Secretary Baca, would you like to take a break for that?
No, no break is needed.
Okay.
As of yesterday, we received 12 comments via the website and in Britain. And then today's comment was one, so that was a total of 13 protests received.
And that was for all rates or one rate in particular?
Not all of them. I could say clarified on which rates. Some of them just said all rates and whether they were in that, you know, in that category or not. But I just assumed it would just take all of them as 13 as a whole. They didn't clarify. A lot of them did not clarify, so I don't know if...
Mr. Riddell, how do you feel about that?
No, that's fine. I mean, no matter how you cut it, the protest level is way, way less than what would be required for it to make a legal difference.
I was just trying to clarify whether it mattered per rate or we're taking all three rates as a group.
It will, even if you counted all 13 protests against every rate, it still would be far below the threshold. So it's not something I don't think that needs to be figured out.
Okay, all right, thank you. So... I think, Mr. Riddell, you've already answered that question. So again, thank you to members of the public for being present today and also participating in our workshops and other outreach related to this hearing. And with that, we can now go to Action Item 5A, which will be consideration of adoption of the three resolutions. Thank you, Ms. Baca and Mr. Riddell, and Ms. Sines, if you could start with the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the board. So you have before you within the staff report, just to reiterate what legal counsel had indicated, that these resolutions that have been prepared in the staff report, they only reflect the changes, which is the changes to monthly rates that go into the bills. And within the staff report are just, they are all of the highlighted changes, no matter how large or small that they are. So everything is contained, is highlighted within the staff report for the changes within all of the quite lengthy resolutions. So after a comprehensive rate study process, as indicated in Ashley's presentation with financial expert NBS, staff is asking for the Board of Directors to take action on the three resolutions to update the domestic water sewer, or otherwise known as wastewater and other references to it, and the recycled water rates. The recycled water rates and sewer pass-through charge that was implemented by CVWD will take effect on July 1, 2023. And the domestic water and the agency's component of the sewer charge that we charge our customers will go into effect on January 1, 2024. And staff recommends that all future rate adjustments be evaluated closer to the implementation date in conjunction with the annual budget. For Resolution Number 1307, which establishes rates, fees, and charges for domestic water service, there have been several updates. The resolution increases the quantitative rate from $2.28 per 100 cubic feet to $2.44 per 100 cubic feet, and updates the water service charges for the domestic water customers in accordance with the NBS proposed rates in its final draft of their report. And a listing of the proposed monthly service charges has been provided within the staff report to highlight them. It details what they are currently permeated size and then provides the updated proposed rate to be effective on January 1, 2024. The resolution also updates the name of the current drought rate surcharge to drought rate. So we made a revision in the name of that charge, as well as we have changed the categories for each rate. As in the presentation prior, it was explained that we didn't have a water shortage contingency plan in place at the time that these rates were originally adopted and placed into the resolution. But now that we do, we felt it would be appropriate to align the rates to the ranges that are set up within that water shortage contingency plan. And so there is a chart within here that updates, shows you what it is currently, and then updates it to the current ranges. And also, those rates have been updated according to the NBS report. The resolution also includes the new proposed revenue stabilization rate. And the revenue stabilization rate would be implemented later, if adopted by the Board of Director in the case of events other than drought or water shortage that causes revenue to fall well below the projected levels. The board would vote to adopt the revenue stabilization rate and would only remain in place until revenues return to the fiscal year-to-date projected levels or until rescinded by the board for any other reason, whichever occurs first. And you have been provided with a listing of those rates. The resolution also adjusts the zone charges per 100 cubic feet necessary to cover costs associated with pumping water to higher elevations. The proposed zone charges are listed within there, and they are grouped into different zones that all have the same rate. And it provides the current rate as well as the proposed effective rate as of January 1, 2024. And you will notice on Zone Charge M, it has been removed. And that is going to be addressed in the Chino Creek Potable Water Rate. It has been moved to a rate in and of itself rather than a zone pumping charge. So the resolution removes Zone M from the zone charges, which is currently applied to the quantitative rate per 100 cubic feet for the Chino Creek Potable Water System, and replaces it with a quantitative rate charge specifically for the Chino Creek Potable Water System. Currently, there is only one customer within this system, and that is the Palm Springs Aerial tramway. And as in the previous presentation, we have met individually with that rate payer to inform them what was going on and gave them the information behind it, and they were supportive. Resolution 1307 also includes adjustments to the fire service charge, updating it. And that listing has been provided. And it also updates the backflow protection device repair charge, increasing it slightly effective January 1, 2024. Lastly, Resolution 1307 includes adjustments to the quantitative rate for temporary construction water meters from $2.60, decreasing it to $2.48 per 100 cubic feet. This temporary construction meter quantitative rate includes the base quantitative rate of $2.44 plus an additional 4 cents per 100 cubic feet in order to meet revenue requirements attributed to the capacity for those temporary construction water meters that isn't generated by the monthly service charge because they are charged a quantitative rate plus a monthly service charge. And that concludes the changes or the updates to the domestic water service rates for Resolution 1307. So next, I'll be moving on to Resolution Number 1308, which establishes the rates, fees, and charges for recycled water. In July 2022, the agency reduced the recycled water rate from $0.79 per 100 cubic feet to $0.60 per 100 cubic feet, and implemented a multi-year strategy to increase the quantitative rate by 5 cents per 100 cubic feet so per unit each year through 2028 in order to make the cost of recycled water comparable to the cost of pumping groundwater from a private well. And that cost includes the replenishment assessment charge that is levied by Desert Water. After 2028, a new rate study will be performed to determine the new recycled water rate. In the study performed by NBS, they incorporated this rate strategy for a recycled water service into their rate study. And NBS has recommended adjusted the fixed meter charge to continue to generate 0.5% of recycled water revenue requirements from the fixed charge and the remaining 99.5% from the variable rate. So I've listed out here the current rate of 60 cents and the new rate that will be effective on July 1, 2023, is 65 cents according to that multi-year plan. And then below, you also have a listing of the proposed fixed charge increases to be effective on the same date. Our last resolution, proposed resolution, is 1309, which establishes the rates, fees, and charges for sewer service. So in addition to the agency's charge for sewer service, the agency passes through the treatment charges imposed by the Coachella Valley Water District and the city of Palm Springs for sewage treatment. CVWD imposes a charge for sewer customers that's located in Cathedral City. And the city of Palm Springs imposes a charge for sewer customers that's located in the Palm Oasis and the Dream Homes communities within Cathedral City. So just a small subset of our sewer customers. To note, the Palm Oasis, it is a rate that we have. We do not have any customers within that area. There are no connections. But it is a rate that is within our resolution. These charges are collected by the agency on customers' monthly water and sewer bills and remitted in full to CVWD and the city of Palm Springs. On July 13, 2023, the Coachella Valley Water District adopted a sewer rate increase that's effective on July 1, 2023. With this adoption of a rate increase, we must also adopt the same rate increase in order to pass through the charge to DWA customers whose sewage is collected by DWA and then delivered to CVWD for treatment. So this was not included in the Prop 218 notice because it is a pass-through charge. And so CVWD has increased their rate, so we are just doing the same. And then we're remitting everything that we collect in full to CVWD. And so effective on July 1, 2023, CVWD's rate is going up to 2710, which will make the rate that we charge our customers 3325 per month per EDU or equivalent dwelling unit. And that includes our current rate of $6.15. Now, moving forward to what is proposed for July 1, 2024, where we are proposing the increase of our rate to, from $6.15 to $7.31, it will make the total charge for our customers of 3441 for the Cathedral City Sewer Service Charge. And then for the Dream Homes and Palm Oasis, it would make 2731 because the city's rate, city of Palm Springs rate, is $20, and that is not projected to change this year. And that's the only changes that we have to the rates within the sewer resolution. Legal counsel has reviewed the staff report and the accompanying resolutions that are proposed for adoption today. For the fiscal impact, in our operating fund, the monthly fire... the monthly fire service rate increases will result in an additional twenty-eight thousand, two hundred dollars per year in fire protection revenues. The quantitative zone, quantitative zone and monthly service charge rates increase will result in additional one point four five million per year in water sales revenues. The recycled water rate increase will result in an additional seventy-six thousand dollars a year in revenues and has already been incorporated into the twenty-three, twenty-four operating fund budget. For the wastewater fund, the sewer rate increase effective July first attributed to CVWD's rate increase will have no net fiscal impact to the agency as it is a pass-through charge collected on behalf and remitted in full to the Coachella Valley Water District. The new rate has already been included in the wastewater fund budget for twenty-three, twenty-four that was adopted at the previous board meeting. The sewer rate increase effective on January first, twenty twenty-four will result in an additional twenty-four thousand dollars per year in Desert Water Agency sewer revenues. And with that, staff recommends that the Board of Directors take a multiple actions today. First, to adopt resolution number one three oh seven for domestic water rates, fees and charges effective January first, twenty twenty-four. Adopt resolution number one three oh eight for recycled water rates, fees and charges effective July first, twenty twenty-three. And adopt resolution number one three oh nine for sewer service rates, fees and charges with the CVWD pass-through rate effective on July first, twenty twenty-three and DWA's monthly service rate effective on January first, twenty twenty-four. With the adoptions of these resolutions, we would recommend the augmentation of the twenty-three, twenty-four operating fund budget, adding one point four five million to water sales revenue, twenty-eight thousand, two hundred dollars to fire protection revenues and one million, four hundred and seventy-eight thousand, two hundred dollars to the reserve for operations. And lastly, to augment the twenty-three, twenty-four wastewater fund budget, adding twenty-four thousand to wastewater service revenues. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Director Grashan, do you have some questions?
Just to compliment the staff, Mr. General Manager, I want to thank you for the work your staff did and brought this together. You know, it's been on the board just barely long enough to follow this process along. I know how much work you guys all put into this and it came together today beautifully. And I just want to thank you for that. And with that, I make a motion at some point when you're ready to adopt the staff's recommended action.
Thank you. Director Blumer?
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Secretary Treasurer McKenna?
I noticed that the cost for construction service has been reduced to match everybody else's costs. But why is that? Why are we giving like one party a reduction in cost and everyone else is going up?
So this year was the first year that we had NBS prepare that rate for us because we felt it was important to, you know, have all of our rates studied and that one previously had not been. And so we wanted to give some good meat behind why we were charging that rate. So that's the rate that was proposed after putting all of the information into the calculations.
Well, I have to say, I'm delighted to be participating in the Prop two eighteen process. It's a nice example of direct democracy at work. It's disappointing we didn't get more comments, but I think the ones we did get were illuminating. So I'm happy to have received. I want to say, I think this process of rate setting, we do it in a sort of fixed point in time. It shouldn't stop right here. I think between now and January, we should take another look at everything that's in this document. And I want to put a bookmark, if you like, on that, that this, I think this is a process that should continue. Particularly interested on the low-income household water assistance program that Riverside Counties, this is rolling into a permanent program, I think, in October. And I want to know that, you know, we're ready technologically speaking to help people with that and that we outreach to our customers who comment a lot about, you know, the cost of living, that these low-income customers get the assistance they need and we make it clear that it's available. And our technology is adopted so that we can do that. I think that's extremely important. I think, you know, the work's not done when this meeting ends. It should continue. That's my comment.
Thank you. Vice President Bowman?
Yes, I too want to thank staff for their work putting this together. What I think is interesting, Director McKenna, is that we have a five-year plan, which means every year we will be relooking at it. So that we do our due diligence at that point to say, all right, has any of the metrics changed? And if so, do we need to say yes to implement the next year's worth? So I think that will fulfill possibly your request to revisit this. And it is, I think it's to our advantage that we have a five-year plan that we don't have to implement any of it if we don't want to. But anyway, I want to thank staff for all of this. Those are my comments.
Thank you. I have no additional comments, so I'll look for a motion.
I move we adopt staff's recommended action.
And I'll look for a second.
I'll second.
Thank you. So.
Just for a point of clarification, that's a single motion to adopt all three resolutions plus the budget augmentation.
That's correct. I don't see it where all the separate items you read off are not on the agenda where I would have read them. But she had it worked out, all figured out. So I assume that'll be what appears in the record.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Roll call vote, please.
Director Grashan?
Aye.
Director Blumer?
Aye.
Secretary Treasurer McKenna?
I'd like to abstain on this.
Vice President Bowman?
Aye.
And President Ortega?
Aye. Thank you. So in conclusion, the proposed domestic water and wastewater rates will go into effect for the first increase in January of twenty twenty-four to be reflected on February bills. The increases for recycled water and the CVWD monthly pass-through sewer service charge will both go into effect on July first, twenty twenty-three and be reflected in August's bill. Further, future increases will be determined by the Board of Directors at public meetings where the community will have a chance to give feedback. The proposed rates in the notice that you received are a ceiling, meaning the board cannot consider rates any higher than those approved today. And with that, we can conclude the meeting. Thank you very much. Have a great day.